Call meeting to order.
Here.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Joey.
Present.
Here.
There's ten please. First thing I want to do real quick, well, there are a lot of the vouchers is uh we have a special guest here. Lance Cowell, who some of you have heard through updates graciously painted all our historical markers. Repainted them, which the state does not fund, and he did it. Out of the kindness of his heart, so I want to take the time to recognize that and present Lance with this certificate.
Thank you.
We appreciate it greatly, thank you.
Thank you Lance. I fronted that.
You did the artwork, right?
Oh, I need.
You know, you're great trick now, I didn't know you had a stuff. I can get away with that, they told me. Very good.
Here. Join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you don't have to get out of your glass. There you go. The one with the state pass ones. They're all their. Oh, no, 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 very, very.
Okay, it's on our day or three month, right now. We're going to the school board, hoping it's gonna lose over. You can keep it conservative, you need outside of school. Not this time.
Okay, he was the one in school. It was one. Let's see, first in person, so we have one. Yes, yes. What year was he born? David Sutter being said the way it's my.
Yeah, that was was in his class, he was best man.
Oh, no, you know, I mean, that's there.
I know.
I feel like everything from like two thirty to five thirty, everything that's happening on the end.
So I gotta take that contract down to the line of. They're actually down by, you know where the Christmas tree shops were?
Yep.
Down there.
The ladder here. I'm not there.
It's still under my house.
Yeah.
We're a folks. I know. If there's anything in Simon. It all down there.
Are you surprised?
He said we do. You're in the hotel, where you sleep at? Well, no, they reopened it under a new. We're gonna play a lot since seventy.
I can think of three that is.
Eighty-three hundred.
I actually know somebody that will probably. One of the kids. I just heard. I'm gonna see how much money. By. I'm gonna get them.
Sixty-three.
Trying to read. Maybe you're not sure. He's gonna go to that. He goes, I'm wanting to tell him.
Sixty-three. Okay, I guess so.
Might maybe. I never did you once, I would do this the one if I do.
I was. Gradually. But we have to split up the bill and figure there we go. We don't have to. Right. So it does it on that, right? Four, three, you know. They preserve a little bit of. They make down a lot of.
Oh. Oh.
That's been while I got business.
You're also.
Without change, probably. Can't get away from the water dogs. We gotta look into.
Child.
So nothing out there.
Then you have, you know, the network et cetera.
Yeah. I think there's no other one. Generation on the board.
I actually have to be back, I have to get. I mean, what else should my school? Hundred percent.
If I could find somebody good, I.
Sixth Thursday. That only says eight dollars. Nope, you're done.
Done.
Yeah. You're done or? Okay, you did all of the girls, huh? I'll try, I they're not quite as cooperative, but I'll try. Okay. Thanks a lot.
There we are.
There's one. It's the one right on the corner of. Sterling, that one being the. Well. Well. It's possible. Instead you're. That's very relevant. Of course, that was a view of the occasion. They. Check.
I bet I read it all, it must've been stuck, I didn't see that.
There are more there on that.
And this will back eight, nine, and then send a action.
That or that stuff is somebody I don't.
I know we got a couple of.
Yeah.
Is it a hundred and something dollars?
Well, the one I'm talking about, some true. The other.
And then uh one down, things far. And one on four. Didn't know that there was.
But yeah, we three, three of them are jerking around here, she didn't. If you think of what, yeah.
The what?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
Is it somewhere there?
Yeah, we got it.
Right.
I ended. Yeah, I don't, yeah, it's fine.
Is it electronics or?
No.
It's in a sparkle. Okay.
There we go. That's how to this artwork.
I start to see the guys that worked at the state there that run. I haven't seen. And I know things. I'm trying to get those. Things.
I did a lot of.
They have sure. A little roadway sponsored by. When we bought through. Two months.
I don't think. When I go.
Yellow. Where I was in town. Remember I spoke to them. That's sort of right here and there. So it's down here. Quite a new idea, so they get down.
Oh, yeah.
Other those must came out. So they even have their.
Over here.
We could try. They were on the bus. Didn't, they come up with calls. I got a message that they filled in today. They're working on.
And I tried to cancel this.
With finally.
Like this one right here. But. These guys, not.
Did they miss you? Probably, no, but we have.
Okay.
And they missed us. The process. Yeah, right. So I think, yeah, you're the same day as us, which is. Then, but it was last week. Last week is this.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah, so recycling. This last day, that's only two weeks, so that would be next Monday. We thank them much. So we're gonna pick up every two. No, every week. Right, no, we do.
Oh, okay. Let's be your.
That had not happened.
All right. Now that we're done with this. Vouchers. Anybody for privileges floor? Lee.
Your thoughts of show on school craft road, hey, there was a water district too.
We'll get to that in the water report, okay? Uh highway.
Well, we got five trucks ready to go. We got one that's uh. We got a little emissions problem we're. Working on. But we, I mean, it's our second backup truck, so we're in good shape. Um, we did something different this fall, and we. We had our trucks under towed. The fall trucks. We went to the expo show, there was a company there that specializes in commercial trucks. And they actually had a ten year old fall truck sitting there that had been treated every year, and there was no rust on it. So the guys and I started talking about it, and. It cost uh. Two hundred and seventy-nine dollars to do a ten year. And right now, you're talking three years and three hundred thousand dollars to replace one of those trucks. So the guys and I. Decided that maybe we ought to try to get a few more years out of these trucks. So we did four trucks, total about eleven hundred dollars. And they're coming back in the spring. You're gonna salt and dry, wash, pressure wash the trucks. And then reapply, this is, this is like a once a year treatment. But they actually get inside the steel caps, inside the. Like doors with the lines and spray this material. And uh. But I will, I will give the guys a shout out, because the guy, the technician showed up with his van, he's got all the machines in there to do it. We had our trucks lined up, and he looked at the fleet over, he said, these are the cleanest town trucks I've ever seen. And that, I mean, that made me feel good about those guys. So.
Big shout out to them.
Right, um, we're gonna try it, I figured for a thousand dollars for four trucks. Like I say, right now, it's three years to get a truck and the three hundred grand.
Yeah.
So if we can stretch the life of those trucks out by keeping them decent. It's, I think it's well worth it. I hope you do too, but.
Yep, yes.
We had money left in the budget, repair budget to do it, so.
How often do they have to be coated?
So it's a once a year, once we pressure wash them off in the spring, it'll, it'll take some of it off.
Yeah.
So for the best results, they said they're gonna, we'll come back for like thirty bucks a truck. And then neutralize, wash the truck. And then reapply, so it'll be, in the spring, it'll be about three hundred dollars a truck to redo it. But. They, they had, let's say, it was a five fifty, but it was, I think, from lines, ten year old truck.
Well.
So. I don't know, we're gonna give it a shot.
I think it'd be worth the investment, give it a shot.
Well, if we can make the trucks likely to last a couple of years longer.
Yeah. Absolutely.
That's like Z bar.
It's. It, this is more like, you've probably heard of like a fluid film, Z bar is more of a, that black tarry stuff.
Right.
This is an oil base, um. It's like a. It's a thinner, it doesn't, it's not that black tarry stuff.
Right.
This is, you don't really see it, it goes on.
Right.
And it forms a barrier between the steel and. But it, it's gonna get knocked off and stones and stuff and pressure washing, so that's why you reapply.
Right.
Um, the, the guy did a good job, he got underneath, you know, he's not a creeper, getting up and under the caps and did all the frame rails and. Where all the crud gets, you know? So we're gonna give it a try, it's, it's worth a shot, I'd say.
Yeah, I know, I have Z bar, we have it on our twenty-ten Highlander.
Right.
And Paul's a believer, he's like, oh, whoa, that really.
Yeah, I mean, anything's gotta help.
Right, exactly, too.
And, and so another thing about trying the longevity of our trucks is because they are pushing for electric trucks.
Oh.
And we don't want the first batch of those to come down.
No.
Or the second or third. Or any.
Right, so anyways, that's, other than we're ready for snow, that's all I got.
Okay, it's over. Suzie.
Yeah, long list this month. I did, uh, ask to look up Alicia's Pickett and her family. Uh, information about the nature center for a historic display, which I believe is on display now. Um, more information on the Picketts and possible stores where he might have worked as a butcher. Requiring me to. Try to find out where he lived, which was in North Sterling. And I had to guess he probably worked at Churchill's Tavern, which is about where the. Green vines, the vineyard is, and uh near the corner of Old State and. One oh four A. That's where that was, and I'm guessing in that hotel, they also had a grocery store, so. That's my best guess for these people. They also wanted information on John Elder and the Elder family. Then I had uh. Information, another one on the Churchill's themselves from Victor Bruce, another one of death certificate from William, poor William Kievel. We didn't find one, but in the Sterling Town minutes in March of eighteen eighty-one. Uh, it's mentioned in the minutes because they needed a replacement for Mr. Kievel, who was an officer of the town. Kathleen Conkey's been here a couple of times this past month, and as I've mentioned before, she's. Related to half of the people in the town, and this time she was looking for Kievel, Knapp. And the Hills, the Brayfords, Dugans, Greens, and Brooks's. And George McGraw and Steve Schelkner. He's the one that donated four thousand dollars to the Historical Society for work that I did. He was looking for information on Alicia and Amos Granger. And after a lot of work, I found that they were residents of the town of Victory, not Sterling, but they are buried in Marco Cemetery, so. That's work when you go from death back to life.
It's a mirror.
Both of them fought in the Civil War in the town of Sterling, uh, one eleventh regiment. So they did have some connection, but not enough. Don't worry, that's it.
Busy month.
Yes.
Okay, um, Historical Society, um, so Lee brought uh this in for. I still look at, I'll let him talk about it, but um. What he's proposing is in the spring, the Historical Society would like to do something similar to what's in this picture for the Caboose over there, so you guys can take a look. But I'll let Lee talk about it, Lee.
Yes, I found that on a website, that Caboose website that I belong to, it's down in New Jersey, I contacted them. And they sent me all the plans and blueprints on it and everything, of course, that's smaller than what we will be building. And I presented to the board trustees, and everybody was in favor of that. There'd be money well spent to protect that Caboose, because once that starts to rot, you don't see it until it's too late, so. Need the protective roof mostly and. Like that, but, so.
Lee, is that something you guys would do yourself, or would you hire one?
Oh, we're gonna hire them.
Carport, okay, anything else?
Uh, we have our orders for sale, massive lumber company, and uh. The calendar will be out sometime around Thanksgiving for sale.
Okay. All right, uh, your water update, so um. We're still on schedule, although I'm hesitant to say that this. According to C two A, we're still on schedule for November thirtieth. I'm hesitant that we're gonna hit that date. My only reasoning for that, though, is just because of the holidays coming in here. I, so I think we're on track, but I don't think it's gonna be November thirtieth, I think it'll be more the first week of December, just because of Thanksgiving, I don't think they've. Planned for the vacations and things. Also, um, next month, C two A E will be here to present at the board meeting. So you guys can look forward to that, and they'll be here, so. That's your update there, uh, emergency services, not kind of any current here. Um, anything for you?
Frank. Oh. Hey, good evening. I, I, I didn't make it to the meeting last, last month, because I was in uh Saratoga Springs. I think it was in the August, first part of September, Bev and I got a phone call from what they call statewide senior action council. And they have a convention. A data convention in Saratoga Springs every year. And Bev and I were invited to represent. Our group, I already had two representatives going for my council in Auburn, and uh, they uh. But they wanted Bev and I there. It was all expense paid trip. Know anything, and what was nice about it, so it was a timing, it was just a couple of weeks before Bev's anniversary, so. It was, it was not a honeymoon when I got there, I'll tell you. It was not, we, we got there at noon on Monday, and we checked in and did all the stuff we had to do, that, you had to take a COVID test, you had to take COVID tests every day. And uh, so at three o'clock, we started meetings, we got done at that five thirty, and we're off for the evening. And then we're right back in at about eight thirty Tuesday, and we never left the convention room at all, they brought the food tours. And all that, we just haven't left. You know, you go to the bathroom or something like that, you didn't leave, you know, and it was just one constant meeting after another, and they just covered anything, anything that seniors that ever want to know about. They're just gonna mention it, it's really something. Uh, we've always, I say we, the, the Hoover County Council Senior Citizens, which I'm the president of in Auburn, they always send two representatives every year to this convention. And they come back with a whole bunch of information and stuff that, that, it's just an embassy thing for statewide, like it says. And they come back with a whole bunch of information and stuff that, that, it's just an embassy thing from statewide, like I said. It's from New York to Buffalo and from Canada to the Pennsylvania border today. That they do all this work for the seniors, and, uh. That, that was really, it was, well, we talked to you earlier about it, Brenda and I, but we're still involved, and. But. And that's what we're going to do. Uh, and then in one of our meetings next, we're gonna have somebody from the, from the organization, from the statewide come, and they will be with Brenda. But at one time, I want to get with you. And I was gonna talk to you later about this, and Brenda and statewide, and also another lady, I just, I just found out about her, her name is Becky Pre, P R E V E. She is executive director for the Association of Yankees, you should see everything I talk about besides Yankees and senior citizens, okay? Yankees in a minute, all right, but, uh, but really, seriously. They're just, there's somebody, the population of the seniors is, is growing, I don't know if you guys know or not, but we're. It was, it was around twenty-seven percent, over sixty for Cuban County. And that was a percentage of population, it's, it's growing closer to thirty percent, it'll probably be that probably by the end of next year or the following year. And, uh, so, and what it is. It's that, are we taking care of our, they gotta have respect and dignity, a lot of these seniors. And when, in my travels around, that some, some of them are not getting it, they're not, you know, they don't know about it for one thing. And our senior fair that we had in September, am I going to, I go, I got three minutes from last meeting, I'm. I can turn that over to this meeting.
Sure.
Uh, and our senior fair, there's people there, we had, I don't know, a couple hundred people there, they didn't know, some of them didn't know that there's such a thing as a senior club, you know, like we have here for that. And, uh. So, with that being said, they just, they just did, no, I want to show you. Uh, what we had at the senior fair. This is, this is a map, of course, of a Cuban county, but what that is, is each town and where all the senior clubs are in the Cuban county. Now, we meet, I said, we, uh, we meet with these people about six times a year, representing for each one of these clubs. And we talk about things, you know. That would help our, would help our members. And like that, and, uh, just, oh, by the way, my son did that app. You know that, it's a big one, you saw a big one, then you, you saw it. And, oh, here, here's a good picture, here, there they are.
There you go.
Yeah, but anyways, but to get back to the thing, it's, you know. It's just so much that it's out there that we don't even know about to help the seniors. You know, a different program. So, but next, next year, after the first year, because I want to bring Will Barkley in on it also. We, we gotta, because when we're in Auburn, we talk about, legislators are not hearing what we gotta say. So we want to bring Will in on it, bring you in on it. And, uh, I'm working on this, uh, Becky, working with C C, she'll come in, we can have a meeting and sit down and talk about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some serious stuff for seniors. Okay? Did I bore you with that?
No.
Okay, and then, uh. And, uh, so we got one more regular meeting, our seniors, and, uh, that'll be it for this year, and our Christmas party will be.
Is that the one I'm supposed to be at?
Well, you're supposed to, but you know, if you feel like it, you know.
No, no, that's fine.
No, that was the last one, but no, you can stop in if you want to.
Okay.
Uh, I think Dave Walsh will probably be stopping in on that one too.
Okay.
He likes to stop by, but that's all right, we can have a nice little meeting.
What's the date on that?
Uh, there'll be, what do I got on here? It'll be the third Thursday.
Okay.
I. I haven't got who I have right now on that. Uh. So that would be it, and our Christmas party would be at the Hannibal Legion, that's on December fourth. And right now, Bev is going through the list, and we got approximately eighty people coming for that. And, uh, she's had to make some cuts to do that. And I was the first one to get cut. I don't know what that was all about. But anyways, uh. So I got to that. The Christmas party, regular meeting, and a, and a great big thank you to you guys for the budget, what you did. What you're, what you're doing for the seniors, it is greatly appreciated. And again, I want to tell you, these towns that I go to or these other people, they don't. They don't have and get what we get. In this town right here, this is great, I always tell them how great Sterling is. At every meeting, Brenda will tell you that. Uh, but no, it's, uh, it's really, I, I'm serious about this, this is probably the most serious I've ever been at one of these meetings. I was so happy what happened in, in, uh, in statewide during Saratoga Springs, there's just so much information that Bev and I got and brought back and. And hopefully we can, you know, do more for our seniors. Not just yours or around, because right now, we're working, we're working real seriously with the Cato senior group. And, uh, they have their own club and all that, but they, they just don't have the. I don't know how to put it, but they try to keep members.
All organization.
Yeah, they're not our position, so they changed, they changed their date. So that Frank can make sure that he can get to their meeting once a month, they want me up there to. Help them, but I, that's bragging, but it's not, it's just, it's all for the seniors, there's no darn thing I do that isn't for those seniors and. And it's been a lot of fun so far for Bev and I, and then I guess that's about it. And if I do think of something else, I appreciate if you let me interrupt.
Okay.
But here's one other important note right here, this was going to happen on March twenty-seventh at one o'clock at Yankee Stadium. The Yankees will be, be their opening day, and I'm not sure, I'm kidding, but they'll be playing the Milwaukee Brewers.
I'll be at Yankee Stadium Saturday.
Are you discovering Saturday?
Notre Dame. Notre Dame and Army.
Yeah, right, 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 I missed that.
Hey Frank, we gotta wrap it up, the Cowboys play tonight.
Okay. Thanks for getting me back on with it.
Clarify something, you mentioned that Thursday is the month because you're interested. So is that, are you talking about this coming Thursday, November twenty-first?
Uh.
Are you talking about December?
Yeah, that's right, they're, they're me, it's, it's like.
This Thursday?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I kept thinking it was another week on there, but no, I already got my notes for that meeting, I should have realized, yeah.
Okay.
You get my age, you know, things happen.
Yeah.
But, thanks again, you guys, for what you do for our club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we're having fun.
We've been. All right, Sony, John?
Um, we're still meeting now about monthly, and we're working closely with, uh. Village of Fair Havens, um, planning board chair. And keeping apprised of how they're progressing. And, um, they're, they may be looking at, um. Uh, work, the Board of Trustees addressing the local law sometime next year for sure. Maybe even the early part, just depending how it unfolds, so. And then I went to some training recently, Cuban County Planning Training, I'm sure it turned rings. And really what it suggested, the presenter was from the Department of State, is that we're on the right track with what we're looking to, uh, to do, so. Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four regular meeting? And publicary, will make that motion?
I'll second. No, baby.
Hi, hi, hi. Accept the supervisor's report for October.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I want to be here.
Okay, uh, we have the correspondence, um. The only thing I want to make sure, I forwarded number three out to you guys to review before the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, well. We're gonna have that in a resolution, but is there anything that anybody wanted to discuss about that first? The, the financial, the fiscal advisors for the water districts? And the grants?
Neither of them. Attorney, they recommended the firm, so I thought.
Yeah, and, and they work with other.
Right.
Yeah. Um. Miller Engineering School Craft Road Bridge, uh, we're still in a holding pattern on that, that'll remain the hold until we get back from the state. So the New York State Retirement, uh, calculation, uh, changed. And the town is gonna correct it in the resolution below. And now on the resolutions, can I get a resolution to pay audited vouchers?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen, yeah, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John, yes, Andy.
Yes. Resolution to change the December regular meeting to December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M, and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such a meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll, I'll second it. Um, but that's a Thursday. So heads up, and you mentioned that C two A E, the representative is coming, so he knows it's the nineteen.
Yep.
Perfect.
Is that the third Thursday of December?
Yep.
Is that when you're?
No.
No, that's why I clarified, this is November. Karen. Yeah, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John. Yes.
Yes. A resolution to schedule a year-end meeting on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at six P M, and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Karen, yes. Carl.
Yes.
Carl.
I'm not gonna be here, but. That's still. Yeah.
Okay. John, yes.
Yes. Can't believe we're. Schedule, schedule an organizational meeting on January.
I didn't know what you meant.
Oh. The twelfth, the wednesday?
Dean, John, for the sixth.
I can do the second or the sixth. Anybody got a problem with the second?
Um. The planning board, they're, they're getting, uh, people attending their meeting, especially if they're holding public hearings, and I don't know what's going on in. January, but, um, and December, that would be the one thing in terms of.
All right.
We can do it in there.
Yeah, we can do it in there, it's gonna be a workshop type thing anyway.
Right, that's, I, I, right, potentially, again, and I don't know.
We can have ours in there.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Okay.
So that's the planning board, um. And we started at six.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay.
We made that resolution.
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that.
Karen.
Yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John. Yes. Andy.
Yes.
Okay, so that's Monday, January sixth, and. January second.
January second.
The second.
January.
Okay, sorry, that's why my long brain.
Okay, resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement with fiscal advisors and Marketing Inc. for Water District Two.
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that.
Karen.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John. Yes.
Andy.
Yes. Resolution to reappoint Terry Beckwith to the Board of Assessment Review?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen.
Yes, Carl.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
John. Yes, Andy.
Yes. Okay, uh, number seven. Be resolved that the town board. Of the town of Sterling hereby establishes the following as a standard workday for elected and appointed officials. For the purpose of determining days worked reportable to the New York State and local employees retirement system. Based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the clerk of this body.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Karen.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
John. Yes, Andy.
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Oh, favor?
Uh, hi.